questions will be shared with members of the central administration team who will respond in a timely fashion. Thank you in advance for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. Of course, in the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of the room to the right. At this time, I ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeFendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Morales. I will keep this portion of the meeting short. We have a couple of presentations planned for the Board of Education that's going to take up a good amount of time. Just highlighting you on a couple of things that have transpired around the district. The first is, we had a really nice opportunity last week to celebrate the life of Murray Kanter. Murray Kanter was a long-term principal over at Woodward Parkway who had passed just prior to COVID. We've been trying to work with the family to find a way to honor Murray and his legacy that he left over at Woodward Parkway, including his impeccable suits, his perfectly combed hair, and his aramis, which was a highlight for students. And again, I had a chance to know Mr. Kanter both as not only a colleague, but as well as an assistant principal over there. And it was a really great ceremony, open mic, opportunity to share stories. And it really does show the kind of impact, you know, that a great leader like Mr. Kanter could have on a building. So really a tremendous evening. One other quick update, again, parents got a notification. We've been discussing flyer distribution, you know, trying to find and strike that balance in the way in which we communicate with parents about upcoming events, specifically outside organizations. So when, as an example, the PAL or the Youth Council or an outside org wants to communicate Girl Scouts or Boy Scouts, we're trying to create a better process for streamlining some of that. So we created a new platform, a new protocol where parents will get on a probably a weekly basis a communication of a link to a website, a place where they're going to take us, that will take them to our website where they will have access to all the forms and flyers that are relevant so that it doesn't become overwhelming. One of the things that we've received is feedback as far as the parent square pieces. We try to be as forward as we can with communication, but some people sometimes feel overwhelmed with the number of communications. So we're trying to be thoughtful about making sure that we give our outside org's voice because they need it so that they can keep up their membership while at the same time being sensitive to the amount of time that we require our parents to stay connected through the parent square system. So and the third piece is, since the last meeting, we had a chance, had a chance to be a part of Band Camp, which was held in Pennsylvania, as it is every year, Pine Forest Band Camp. It was really, again, a tremendous experience with thanks to the, to the people, the directors of the music program and everybody else that took the time to put that on. It really is for those people that, and I know many of you have had a chance in your years of service on the board, Mr. Miko this past year, it's a tremendous experience for those people that get to be a part of it. So looking forward to my kids actually next year, being a part of Band Camp and going up there as a chaperone myself as a dad. But the last couple of years being up there as the superintendent has been amazing to be able to share that experience with the parents and, and with our students. Any questions for me? Okay, I'm going to ask the board to just join the audience. We're going to drop the screen. We have a presentation on safety and then a subsequent presentation on this year's tax levy. So we'll talk that through and then we'll come back up on stage. So while the screen is warming up, my part to play in this is brief. Last month, I had a chance to present to the community the work that we've completed as a result of a six-month compilation of efforts on behalf of parents and students, our portrait of a graduate, right? The philosophical underpinnings that will continue to shape how and why we choose to do what we do here in our schools. And the, what came as a result of that were two things. One was 10 tenants that I shared, and it's again, it's up on the website for anyone that hasn't had a chance to see it, of the things that you, the community, that are students, that are teachers, that are administrators, community groups support, right? What are those 10 things that are philosophically important to us here in Farmingdale? And how, over the course of the next several years, we will continue to embed those 10 tenants into everything that we do? When we do curriculum writing, how do you make sure that those 10 tenants live within the confines of curriculum writing? When we have a parent meeting, how do you make sure that we're talking about the things that are specifically relevant? When we celebrate the accomplishments of our students, how do we make sure that those 10 tenants are a part of what we do in our celebration of students or their successes? One of the things that we spoke about as part of that work, what were commitments that we were making to the community. So within the confines of the 10 tenants, we were going to make three commitments. And one of those commitments was about safety. And it was both about the wellness of our students, right? The social emotional health of our students, making sure that we have all the right support services in place so that they feel emotionally supported. But also, the physical safety of our students was something else that the board was looking to focus in on for the upcoming school year. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over in just a minute to Mr. Zakian, who's going to take the board and the community through a presentation on safety and security. It's really broken down into three pieces. The first piece is about what we have in place. And he'll talk it through a little bit with you about why we're reserving some of the particulars, obviously, because we don't want to get too deep into the weeds from a public-facing standpoint about our protocols and how we respond to things. But he will take you through the parameters of what we have in place in order to provide a physically safe environment. And then about things that we're doing to improve it. Because like everything else, even though we might be good in certain regards, there are ways in which we can get better. So he'll take you through some of the things that we're going to be doing in order to try to improve upon our safety and security here. And the last piece is something that's important to us, which is accountability systems. Great that you're doing X, Y, and Z. How do you know it's having its intended effect? Some of the survey work that we're going to be doing with the community and with our students to make sure that we are coming full circle back around, that the efforts that we are making are in fact creating a safer environment and are in fact making us feel safer. So again, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Zakian. I will come back because again, we have a second presentation coming up in a little bit with regard to the tax levy. But for now, Mr. Zakian, safety and security.
Thank you, Mr. DeFendini. As, as Mr. DeFendini said, first of all, I want to greet and welcome the board members tonight, the members of our community who are here tonight in person to view this and those who are viewing, viewing this remotely. We look at this, and I understand when you think of the tenants that we've come up with for the portrait of a graduate, you may think curriculum-driven items, things along those lines. But I can assure you that safety and security within the district is paramount to effectively putting whatever we're teaching, whatever we're learning, and however we're working in place. So we're going to talk about, as Mr. DeFendini said, some of the infrastructure work that we have. Some of it you've experienced before, some of you haven't. Some of what we will discuss will appropriately be left out because we cannot disclose specific items so that we do not compromise some of the safety procedures that we have in place. I'm going to be able to show you a, a portion of a video that we share with our teachers. Who will look at the video, they will have a lockdown system, one of our protocols that we have in place. And it helps our teachers to rehearse and practice what the expectations are. You'll be able to see a large portion of what our lockdown system is. Then we'll talk about security within the district moving forward. So first a little, make sure, Jeff, we're going to get this moving. Hold on, please, sorry for this. Okay, so first a little background. The importance of this, of safety and security is that feeling safe, feeling comfortable, feeling secure goes hand in hand with the learning process that our students go through. And their wellbeing and learning is as important to us as any other safety measure that we have in place. School safety plays a crucial role in a student's development and their academic success. The students who feel safe at school, both physically and emotionally, tend to have better emotional health and are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. Conversely, students who do not feel supported and not safe at school, both physically and psychologically, cannot learn to their fullest potential. And we clearly recognize this, which is why we focus so hard on these parameters. There is no one specific item that is going to solve all of our problems. Safeguarding our students is something that I know keeps me up at night, keeps Mr. DeFendini up at night to think about unfortunately what you see and hear about worldwide, not only in schools, but in theaters or malls, whatever else. And we do not, I promise you, we do not take for granted the fact that you send to us your most cherished possession on a daily basis and you expect that child to come home to you. As parents, as teachers, as students, as employees, we all want that. And that's why we work so diligently with everybody that we can, from families to engage what we do, which is part of what tonight processes, to working with our local police departments, on and on and on, to get these roles and these formations accomplished. There have been numerous physical plant upgrades. I'm going to discuss some things that you've seen already, that you experienced whenever you come to our schools, as well as some new items. And I'm going to talk about them and you will also be seeing them on the video as we move forward. So one of the first items that we have put in place to kind of secure our buildings are the limited access vestibules. Some of you may have heard, it's a slang term called a man trap. And these are put in place to guide any visitors to our building in order to gain entrance. All of our buildings are in a constant state of lockout, which means our perimeter doors, our exterior doors are all locked to prevent somebody from entering at any point in time through a different exit. We want to manage the people that come into our buildings in the presence of our faculty, staff, and our students. These limited access vestibules have two key roles for us. The first one is to navigate and vet and approve people from entering our schools for a purpose. The other one is to limit foot traffic in our building. So the first area, as you can see, when you come to one of our schools, there is a buzzer on the outside, the doors are locked. You must press that button. You're greeted by either a monitor or a security aide who will greet you and ask you for the purpose of your visit. At that point in time, you say, oh, I have a meeting with Mr. Smith in the guidance office. At that point in time, the monitor or safety guard will in fact vet that, that meeting, the appointment that you have. Once you're cleared, you will be buzzed into the building and into the vestibule. In this vestibule, you can see there are two small tables on, these are two separate pictures, obviously, where you will be asked to scan your license. That license scanner will put you through, we will pull the picture from the license into our program that prints out a badge with your photo on it, with the destination that you're going to. It also runs your license through a database that we will use to approve you to enter our building. Once you are cleared through both of those venues, you are buzzed into the building, you go to the area where our monitors is, you will provide them with your license. They will then give you your sticker and we will walk you and escort you to your appointed area. Now, some people question, why do we take people's licenses? The simple truth is it's to guarantee that that person exits the building. That we don't know if they're staying in the building and have ill intent, whatever it may be. We know that when you come to us to exit the building, you'll get your license back, you'll turn in your badge, and you did in fact leave the building. The other aspect is to limit foot patrol, foot, you know, courses in the building. If you bring mail, if you're dropping off paperwork at the high school, if a child has forgotten an instrument or their lunch or needed money, any of those items, we will allow you into the vestibule. There's an area where you write your name and information on a card, your child's name, and you leave it in the vestibule. At that point, that individual exits through the door, the doors are locked. Our security team or our monitor will go, retrieve that, bring it into the main office, and then we will bring it to your child. So we're trying to prevent unnecessary use of our building by people that don't belong in there at any point in time. This is an app that has been using, is, we've used for about four years or three years now. It was launched by the Nassau County Police Department and all 56 school districts in Nassau County are using it. This is called the Rave App. It's on our phones. Numerous teachers, many clerical, custodial, and all the administrators have this app on their phone. And it's an app that allows us to directly communicate and reach 911 instantaneously. I'm not sure if you can clearly see it from where you are, but in this center aisle right here, there are five buttons that are up there. One is 911, one is police, medical, fire, and the one in orange is called an active assailant. And if we press any one of those, it will then send a message to 911, a specific area of 911 that'll be responded to automatically and allows us to silently communicate with 911 in the event. and allows us to silently communicate with 911 in the event. By pressing that active assailant button, there is a full, full release of resources by our Nassau County and/or Suffolk Police Departments, EMS, emergency medical teams, fire department, ambulance, because that is a full belief that there is an active assailant shooter situation in our building. And this provides us with immediate access. It will unleash a response like no other very, very quickly to our buildings. Providing us with this, or you should also note, too, it's geolocated, specific to the building that your app is designed for. So, if you are in this building right here and you press it, they will know exactly where to go. If I'm at another building, or even if I'm home and I press that, it will not send the app, it will not send the alert and force them to respond. So, you must be in the geographic area of the building that your phone is attached to in order for it to release this response by the police and medical staff and everybody else that comes to us. One of the things that you may or may not see in our building is called a lockdown button. And these lockdown buttons are amazing tools for us. If you could see up there, in June of 2022, just a few short months ago, New York State passed what's called Alyssa's Law. And it said that districts should, quote unquote, "consider" the use of a silent panic alarm system. We have had this system in our building since 2015. So, we are way ahead of the curve. Happy to say that, happy to show that. And these buttons have a numerous amount of functions that, when they're pressed, take place. They're wall-mounted, they're located in various parts of the building, which I won't disclose, but we have access to them in numerous facilities, upstairs, downstairs, front buildings, back buildings, wherever we need them to be. When we press that button, a number of things automatically transpire and happen. The first is an automatic police notification, that we've had a panic alarm button that was pushed. The second is a pre-recorded public announcement done by the building principal, alerting the fact that there is a situation that requires the building to go into lockdown mode. And you're going to see this take place in the movie I'm going to show you. We also have high-powered strobe lights, which I will address in a little while, that help us to alert people in large-scale student gathering areas. If the announcement comes on and you're in the middle of the cafeteria, or if you're at the high school in the band room with over 100 students participating and using their instruments, you may not hear the announcements. These lights are installed in various areas to not only so you could hear it, but they would alert you to that fact. And these lights, which are brand-new this year, are indoors and outdoors for the people that are coming to our buildings. Lastly, magnetic door release. What that simply means is all of our classroom doors are held open by a magnet. Our classroom doors are built with a handle that is always in a locked position. Think of a hotel room, the door is always locked. You could use a key, obviously, to get into the door, but once you enter the door, it goes back to a locked position. When we press that lockdown, that wall-mounted emergency lockdown button, every magnetic door in that building is automatically disengaged and closes on its own. That's to prevent students, faculty, and staff from hearing an announcement and having to go to the door, putting themselves in harm's way if there is an active shooter in their hallway at any point in time. So, these all happen, and you will see this transpire in a short time. We've had numerous upgrades to our camera system. As little as four years ago, we had 200 cameras in the district. Now, we have over 800 cameras, both interior and exterior cameras, used to help us monitor activities throughout the district and throughout the buildings, day, night. They're very specialized cameras. You can see on your left-hand side, it helps us, we can tag and track an individual who enters and goes through our building. We could follow them from spot to spot with our camera system. We have an auto zoom that we could freeze, we could identify people, we could zoom in on something in their hand, their face. We could get facial recognition and help us to identify people by the use of these cameras. There's a user-friendly interface that allows us to put numerous cameras, up to 40 cameras at a time, on our screen simultaneously so we could observe what's going on in specific areas of the building. And we could create quadrants of cameras, like at the high school, for example, in the commons, and we have 12 cameras in the commons that shows us every angle. Outside, so we could put just the outside exterior cameras up at one time to monitor and supervise on different events. Lastly, is an interactive 3D map that these cameras present to us that give us the exact locations and idealistic field of view for each camera so we know what we're looking at and where we're looking as we move forward. These are the strobe lights I talked about. These are brand-new for this year. These strobe lights you may have seen on the outside of the buildings. Again, they're located indoors and outdoors. We've installed 80 of them district-wide this past summer. And again, it's just another matter of alerting our students, our faculty and staff in the case of an emergency, and to take notification and begin their lockdown procedures and get to safety. Safety measures that we've taken. This is a hard subject for us to talk about, but it's a reality that we have to talk about. It's hard for our faculty and staff to have to hear and listen to. There are two components to this screen. The first is that we have offerings to our faculty and staff on a voluntary basis, training programs regarding stop the bleed, CPR, and Narcan, I guess, giving Narcan to an individual to bring them back during an overdose. On the bottom, you see what's called a stop the bleed kit. These are packets about the size of a large sandwich bag. And within them, there are numerous life-saving items. There is packing gauze, there is tape, there are shears and scissors, there are gloves. There is a tourniquet to help stop heavy bleeding during an emergency loss. There is a marker to take notes as you're using it. These packets, we've ordered over 700 of them, and they are hanging up in every office, main gathering area, and classroom in our district. Again, it's a reality for us. But we would rather have it and never use it than not have it at all in case of, God forbid, a true emergency where these uniform items are needed. They're located in the same spot in every classroom in case we have a substitute or somebody who's in a strange room. Everybody knows exactly where these packets are hung up on the classroom wall. And our teachers have been working, I know in middle school, high school, they've been put up, if they haven't been done in the elementary schools, you may hear your children talk about that soon, they will be going up within a week that they'll be put up in their walls. And our teachers and staff have been working with their children in their class to explain what they are in a basis so they're not scared, it's just part of the room. But yet, for us, knowing that we have them there is a great comfort. I know and spoke to Homeland Security this week about this. We are one of two school districts in all of Nassau County that have these stop the bleed kits available for our students and our staff. AEDs. The Automated External Defibrillator Units are throughout our buildings. These are devices, mechanical devices, to help somebody who is having a heart attack or a heart malfunction. These are public, they are hanging up throughout our buildings. We have 18 of them. They've been upgraded most recently over the last year. Again, all of these items have come to us because of the support of the board, who has taken our interest to heart and said, "Let's use it, let's go." They've budgeted the resources for us to purchase these items. These are hanging up throughout the buildings, 18 of them, as well as multiple portable units. The portable units are used for field trips, for athletic contests that are on the fields far away from the building, so they're always onsite for us. And if you're ever in one of our buildings, this is a location map. We have these hanging up in our buildings, too. It's a floor plan of the building, a spot, kind of, you are here with delineations of where the AED devices are within our building for you to locate them in case you are here in the event of an emergency, when school is not in session, like tonight, or at an event in the evening, when it's a public event. Alarmed exterior doors. As I said, we're in a constant state of lockout, which means that we prevent people from entering through the outside without our knowledge. And the doors are alarmed, so if you do happen to push that panic button door and open it, a loud alarm will sound. It is annoying, it's very loud, and you could hear it. If you've ever heard one, you'll know why it draws attention to it. And it's really an effort, once we hear that alarm, to gain a response by building administration or our custodial group or our security team, who can go to identify the need as to why the door was opened, who left, or more importantly, if somebody came in by use of that door because it was propped open by somebody when it shouldn't have been. We have safety drills. We work diligently in our schools. We do more than this, but we're required to do 12 drills a year. Eight of them are evacuation drills, like, as you all know, your prototypical fire drill. Four of them are lockdown drills, and one of those will always include a reunification drill. Reunification drill is what we put in place in the event of an emergency where we will not have busing for our students. If an event happens, let's just say at 11:00 in the morning. And once that event is over, if parents want to come to retrieve their children, we have it where the children are placed in their classrooms. And whatever room they're in, we will know based on the time of day. The parent will come to the school, request their child, photo ID will be vetted. We will then go, find your child, and bring your child down to you, make the exchange so you can safely bring your child home. And that's in place in all of our buildings. And we could do that from the smallest of schools that we have up to the high school where we have 1,600, 1,700 students. So, this process is in place, and each of our schools will practice this each year. Okay, the next thing I'm going to show you is a short video. It is somewhat edited, as I said before, to protect some of the items that we put in place so that we don't share it. Faculty and staff will see something a little bit more in-depth, but you're going to be able to see most of everything that we just talked about kind of in action at this point in time. The Farmingdale School District continues to make safety a top priority. Many of you are sure to have seen buttons such as this, mounted in several locations throughout our buildings. This is an emergency lockdown button and part of our lockdown system. When the button is pressed, it instantly contacts law enforcement and works immediately to secure our buildings. Our lockdown system is designed to protect our school buildings during an active assailant situation. This presentation explains what a lockdown is and an overview of our lockdown system. What is a lockdown? A lockdown is used to secure school buildings and grounds during incidents that pose an immediate threat of violence in or around the school. Activating the lockdown system. To activate the lockdown system, lift up the clear plastic cover of the wall-mounted lockdown button. Push in the red button in the center. Once the red button is pushed in all the way, it will lock in place, and you will hear an audible click as well. When the lockdown button is pressed, the following actions occur simultaneously. Police are contacted. Magnetized doors are released, locking and securing classrooms. Pre-recorded lockdown announcement will play over all speakers. Your attention, please, this is Mr. Herman. There is a situation requiring the school to lock down. Interior and exterior strobe lights will activate and begin flashing. Farmingdale School District activated lockdown system. Your attention, please, this is Mr. Gavallas. There is a situation requiring the school to lock down. Lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. Strobe lights. Interior strobe lights flash to alert of a lockdown and follow lockdown protocols. Exterior strobe lights flash to warn people away. Strobe lights are equipped in the following areas. Cafeterias. Gyms. Music rooms. Auditoriums. Entrances. Exterior walls. Strobe light signage. Strobe light signs will be displayed near all interior and exterior strobe lights. Rave Panic Button. The Farmingdale School District is also equipped with the Rave Panic Button app. The Rave App instantly communicates emergencies to 911, onsite personnel, and first responders for an integrated and immediate response. Lockdown drills. New York State Education Law Section 807 requires all New York State schools conduct four lockdown drills each school year. Please be sure to review your building's emergency protocols. While it is our hope we never have to use this button, it is always best to be prepared in the event of an emergency. Thank you for viewing this presentation. If you have any questions regarding the lockdown system, please feel free to reach out to a member of your building administration team for assistance. Okay, so that gives you a brief insight of some of the processes that we have in place. And you should know, we're proud of what we've done with the support of the board, as I mentioned before, the vision of numerous stakeholders from the public and the district-wide safety committee. Jeff, could you help me out on that, please? Sorry about that. As it's coming up, and the district-wide safety committee, we work hand-in-hand with three major agencies. Nassau County Police, the Suffolk County Police, since we have a school in Suffolk County, as well as Homeland Security. And we work with them on a continuous basis. And we are one of the districts that is focused and is really emulated by other districts. Many occasions, I will have outside schools from different venues. I'm not ready to talk about tax levies, that's for sure. I'll scare people if I try and attempt that. We're emulated, I'm proud to say that. Where I will have typically four or five districts from outside of Farmingdale come to visit us to look at our safety protocols. And each one, when I ask, "How did you hear about us?", it's because the police departments and Homeland Security recommend that they come to see what we've done in our district so they can make their plans to move forward. So, we are proud that we have advanced in all of those methods. Last item I want to talk about briefly is security in Farmingdale. As much as we have the infrastructure with all of the items that you saw, having men and women who are our security detail to help apply these items and help protect us on a daily basis is really important. As little as seven, six years ago, we had six security guards district-wide, all of whom were stationed at Farmingdale High School to assist with student supervision, when you had 2,000 students and 3,500 staff. There was a requirement that needed assistance to help us in that detail. Now, over time, we've recognized the fact that we need that type of security in all of our buildings. And on a daily basis, we supply and support 41 security guards in our schools during the day as well as at night. Security is placed both indoors and outdoors in some school. And at night, the buildings are still in a state of lockout. We have security that works and manages each one of our buildings as well. We are really focused now, and this whole plan is being implemented basically as we speak, literally. We have the support of the board to extend the supervisory role of our security guards. And we're adding two new positions to the district. The first is a district-wide Dean of Student Conduct and Strategic Planning. And that individual is going to help us not only with the infrastructure, the camera maintenance, the lockdown buttons, the lights functioning, all of those things. They're going to liaison with all of the building administrators to work with the personal building leadership teams, as well as the safety teams in each building, to tabletop and to manage and supervise all of their drill work. They will be a liaison across all buildings to regain consistency in what each building is supposed to do during emergency setup and during a lockdown and during drills. That position is also going to help oversee the security that we have in district. On your left, you'll also see that we will have a lead security supervisor. And that supervisor is going to be a new hire that we're going to have. It's almost our boots on the ground. our boots-on-the-ground type of individual, who's going to go to each school every day in the morning, in the afternoon, or at night, and work with our security staff to ensure that they are doing what is expected of them from a security standpoint, their interactions with the public when they come during the day, or especially at night when the schools are closed to students but open to the general public, and ensure the fact that everybody's following a precise detail. Even though, as I said before, we are emblematic and we are somebody that everybody recommends and really aspires to be, we're not going to rest on our laurels. We want to continue to get better and refine our skill set. And having these positions in place to not only oversee the infrastructure, but to oversee the security teams that we have in place is going to be a huge benefit to all of us moving forward. Looking ahead, again, we're not resting on our laurels. If you're good, get better. If you're great, be excellent. And that's what kind of the motto that we're following. We're going to continue to work, I'm on the district-wide safety committee, and we have about forty members of the community and the school community that are a part of that team from different venues, everybody from fire to bus safety to the police to Homeland to Security, who all are a part and bring their level of expertise to look at our systems, to manage our systems, and to make recommendations. And better than that, all six of our schools have their own internal building safety committees that not only are part of the larger safety committee, but bring those messages back to their building specifically. We will continue to work with Bosie, who has a safety compliance officer, that we work with on a weekly basis to ensure that not only we're following the rules, but we're in compliance with all laws and regulations on a daily basis. Lastly, we have continued collaboration with both the Nassau County and Suffolk County Police Departments, as well as Homeland Security. Continued attendance at safety conferences that I and/or my staff attends, depending on if there's an emergency, Nassau County will call Commissioner Ryder had a meeting just last month that we went to. So we attend all of these meetings at the request and invitation of the police department who help us out tremendously. And lastly, as Mr. Dependini said, if we want to get better, you need to know what you're not doing well. And that's going to be part of a survey that we're going to release probably in the next couple of weeks, where we'll be asking people for your input, not only on the physical plant and the physical infrastructure and safety, but also of the emotional and psychological safety feelings that your children exhibit so that we can look at those results, work on that throughout the year, try to make the improvements that we have, identify needs that we may be missing, and then send out a follow-up survey in the spring to kind of say, "Hey, how'd we do? This is where we were, this is what you said, this is where we are", and try to move, advance in an improvement level as we move forward throughout the year. At this time, I will ask the board if you have any questions that I can help to clarify or answer for you. Okay, if there were any questions by the community during the public participation portion of our meeting, be happy to entertain those questions at that point in time. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Dependini, who is going to introduce our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Zakian. Again, and this is part of the board's commitment this year to be more forward-facing, to talk more publicly about goals, aspirations, the things that we're working on as a community to make sure that we open up those lines of communication. So I thank you, Mr. Zakian. Again, adding to that is going to be the second part of the public presentation tonight, which is on the tax levy, which again, Mike will take you through the whole process. Obviously, this is something that happens over the course of the summer. As we near the fall season, we actually do set the tax levy, and Mike will talk about what the impact of that will be on you when you do open up your tax bills and all the different kinds of circumstances that are at play with regard to your particular taxes. I just want to also emphasize the fact that this will be part of our protocol each month. So next month, we're going to be turning our attention to some curricular matters, Parent University, Math AIS, the Teacher Center. Following that, we have another presentation planned for the following month. We're going to get around to talking about our Special Education Department a little bit later on in the year. We're going to be talking about some of the new structures and systems that we have here at the middle school, providing some feedback as we get on into the school year. So again, you can expect each month for us to be talking about a different goal that we have established or the Board of Education has established for the school district. But right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Motisi, our business official, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the 2022-23 tax levy.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Yes, as Paul had mentioned, this is a pretty timely presentation with most of the school taxes being posted now to the Nassau County website. Some of your tax bills may have been received. We're going to do a brief presentation tonight, it's only about fifteen slides. Each resident's tax bill is unique, and I encourage all of you, if you have questions, to give my office a call. I've already received several phone calls, I've walked some residents through what's going on with their taxes. And the question that I get the most and what I hope to answer tonight is, if the district had a one and a half percent increase in the levy, why am I seeing five, ten, fifteen, twenty percent increases in my taxes? And the answer really lies in how the taxes are distributed through Nassau County and through Suffolk County to the individual properties. It's really a little bit complicated. I don't know, I'm not a property tax or assessment expert. I know what I know through the years of doing this, working with other business officials and talking with the county. But just to backtrack a little bit, the 2022-23 tax levy, there was a 1.59% increase in the levy that the school district needed to support the programs that was approved by the voters back in May. The factors that go into the tax rate calculation, provided by the state and county, we have the assessed values, the base proportions, the equalization rates. I'm going to go into a little bit of those definitions coming up right now. And what the school district provides is the voter-approved tax levy, right? Some of the taxing definitions that I just mentioned, base proportions, so there's four classes of property in Nassau County, there's class one, two, three, and four. Class one is the largest, those are your residential properties, followed by condos and co-ops, and then utilities, and ultimately, commercial properties. The base proportions are provided by Nassau County to the school district, and it tells the school district what portion of the levy is going to be allocated to which class of property. So, for example, if class one has an eighty percent appropriation, we're going to allocate eighty percent of the taxes to class one, and so on and so forth, going through the other classes. Nassau County also provides the market value and the assessed value, and there's an important difference. So when the reassessment was done five or six years ago, it used to be at a .25% of the fair market value, now it's at .1%. And there's a difference between the market value and the assessed value. So the market value is what the county lists as your probable price that a property would sell for. Now, it's not, it's not perfect, it's not ideal, and in most cases, if you go online and look at what the county has listed there on their website, you know that your property would sell for a lot more than what they have up there. But this is how they assess, and it's a fraction of that that's used in this process that we're going to go through in a little bit. One last thing, the town of Babylon, because Farmingdale is a split taxing jurisdiction, there's two different methodologies that are used for assessing properties, which complicates Farmingdale's property taxes even more. Lastly, is the equalization rates. So there are nearly 4,000 taxing jurisdictions and 1,200 assessing units in New York. And what equalization rates attempt to do, and again, equalization rate is something that's provided by New York State to the districts, is it attempts to seek a measure, seek to measure the relationship of locally assessed values to the ever-changing real estate market. So basically, it tries to level the playing field, because everybody's doing everything a little bit differently. Again, Farmingdale is a split taxing jurisdiction, so we have a more complicated special equalization rate that we have to wait for each year before we can actually do the calculations to see what the tax rates are going to look like for the community. So after you plug in all the numbers that are given to us, this is what comes out. And there's a lot going on on this slide, and what I really want to highlight is, on the top, we have our 21-22 numbers versus on the bottom, the 22-23 numbers. And what you see on here is you have your assessed values, is the first line, followed by the equalization rate. And when you divide that, you come to the full valuation for the properties in the district. And then you have the apportionment, so you have a total. So, for example, last year, we had a full value of 4.9, and then 1.4 billion, and then a total of 6.4 billion, right? And when you divide the 4.9 by the 6.4, you come up with this ratio, and so on. And what happened is, in 22-23, the equalization rate, again, Farmingdale has a special equalization rate, so we have two for the different towns, dropped. And what it did is it caused an increase in the full value of the properties in the town of Babylon. And it shifted the taxes a little bit from the Nassau County residents to the town of Babylon, which is why on the bottom, you'll see a change in full value of 2.55 for the Nassau County versus 3.78 for the town of Babylon. And on the next couple of slides, you're going to see what that translates to on the One last thing, I mentioned this earlier, but the different classes of property, class one being the largest residential properties, 85.3% versus 85.2. As you can see, they remain relatively equal year over year. So here's an example of what I was just mentioning about the equalization rates in Nassau County. This, at the time that I did this presentation, these were estimated, but the actuals have been posted to the website, they're a little bit different from this, but it's fairly accurate. So the difference from 21-22 to 22-23 was $97 or 1.22% for the Nassau County residents. Again, as a point of reference, the levy increase was 1.59%. Again, not everybody, everybody's taxing bill will look different, but what this is showing is the average taxable value. So the average taxable value or the average assessed value of 364 is provided by Nassau County to the district, and that's where this calculation is coming from, and that's where I'm coming up with that increase year over year. And if you move over to Babylon, it's the same exact formula, except they're seeing a 3.75 increase in their taxes versus the 1.59% increase that the district asked the community for in May. So for Nassau County, the rest of this presentation pretty much focuses on Nassau County because we are predominantly in Nassau County. The reassessment is still in effect for the 22-23 school year. For the 22-23 school year, Nassau County had frozen the residential properties, so they froze the market value associated with the properties. But each year, the values, the assessed values are being scaled in via the Taxpayer Protection Plan, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that coming up. The level of assessment, as I had mentioned earlier, dropped from .25 to .1 when they did the reassessment a few years ago. And then the Taxpayer Protection Plan, which is a five-year phase in, this is year three of five, and this automatically shows up on your bill. So, basically, the way this works is if you're somebody that grieved consistently every single year, if you grieved your assessed value every single year, all you do when you grieve, or when you file for an exemption of senior citizens or eliminate income exemption, the taxes don't go away, they get shifted to other residents. So, in the example, and I'm going to stick just with the grievance process, if you grieve the assessed value of your home, and let's just say the assessed value of your home was 500, and you say, "No, it's only worth 490", well, that ten of assessed value has to get made up by somebody else, and it gets made up by other residents, and it gets made up by the residents that aren't grieving. So when they did the reassessment, what they aimed at doing was correcting this, but what it did is it caused everybody who had been grieving to see, or would have seen, dramatic increases when they rolled out the new property values, the new assessed values. So what they did is they started the Taxpayer Protection Plan, which was going to phase that in over time. And I'm going to show you, coming up in a couple of slides, an actual, real example of two properties in Farmingdale and how this impacted those two properties. So, it's really important, and this is where a lot of the questions that I get from the public come from. But lastly, everything that I'm saying to you can be found on Nassau County's website if you just type in mynassupproperty.com. It's going to take you to a website that looks like this. You can look up by your section block and lot, you can look up by your address, and then it's going to take you to a slide that looks like this. And then there's a tab over here for your general and school taxes. This is the taxing year you want to be in. And then up here is all the notifications that went out regarding the Taxpayer Protection Plan to you as a resident. So this is the real example that I wanted to highlight for everybody. So, we're looking at the current year versus last year, and we're looking at two different scenarios. So on the top, we have our current levy. And this is, both of these houses are actually in North Massapequa, they're in the state streets. This first example is someone who consistently grieved year after year. They are seeing a 10.2% increase in their school taxes, and that is a result of predominantly two things. Number one, they're grieving every single year in the past. And two, they, they, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. They, hold on, sorry about that. So this person was consistently grieving year over year, they saw a 10.2% increase versus someone who did not grieve year over year is actually seeing a decrease. So, the taxes were being shifted over the time, all the years that this person was grieving, the taxes were being shifted to this resident. And now this resident is reaping the benefits from what's going on over here. On the bottom, another hypothetical example, so if we had increased the taxes by zero percent, if there was no increase in the levy at all, the person on the bottom would have actually seen an 8.2% increase in taxes versus someone who did not grieve, again, which would have seen a negative 6.3% reduction in their taxes. So some of the factors that are impacting this are the impact of the reassessment, so they're getting phased in at greater amounts because they were grieving all of that time. Their individual tax grievances, so they can continuously grieve, and that will impact the numbers further, because the state law still allows all of the residents to grieve their taxes or grieve their assessed value. And then lastly, any approved exemptions, again, will shift the taxes from one resident to another. So when I get phone calls from residents, often, this is what's happening, and this is what I have to explain to them, which is basically, the taxpayer protection plan is hurting you from all the years that you had been grieving. Moving on from the taxes to some STAR information and some new stuff that's out there, so there's different types of STAR, there's basic and enhanced STAR, and then there's the STAR exemption and the STAR credit. Somebody that has been in the district for a long time, most likely has what's known as the STAR exemption. That's where you're used to paying less taxes upfront, so if it's $1,000, $1,000 comes off your bill, and instead of owing 8,000, you owe 7,000 in school taxes. Anyone who bought their house after 2015 had to enroll in the STAR credit program, and that's the process by which they send you a check once a year for you paying the taxes fully upfront. If your income is greater than 250 and less than or equal to 500,000, you must enroll in the STAR credit program. And if your income is less than 250, the state is encouraging that you enroll in the credit program, because what they're doing is they're actually freezing the amounts that they're giving out. So the STAR value that, the STAR exemption that you're receiving, if you're one of those older residents, is actually not growing at the same rate as the other STAR. So they're encouraging that, although it's not required, you will continue to receive the exemption. STAR eligibility for the 23-24 year, so just some basic facts. The only thing that's really changed year over year is the enhanced STAR amount has increased to 93,200. But again, in order to be eligible for STAR, it must be your primary residence, you must own it, your age, there's some age restrictions determining whether you're basic or enhanced, and then the income limits, again, which help determine basic or enhanced. This is a new one this year, this is the Homeowner Tax Rebate Credit. I don't know too much about this yet because it is so new, but basically, it is for anyone who has income less than $250,000 on their, or reported income less than $250,000 on their 2020 tax return, you must have qualified for STAR in the 22 year, and you must have a school tax liability for the 22-23 school year that is more than your 22 STAR benefit. And the homeowner tax rebate credits, the amount of your credit will depend on where your home is located, how much your income is, and whether you receive enhanced STAR or basic STAR. And this whole presentation will be posted to my website tomorrow. And this whole presentation will be posted to my website tomorrow. This link will be active for anyone that's interested. There was a very, very big chart that I didn't want to put into the presentation that kind of walks you through exactly how much your check will be. But it would have taken up multiple slides, so I didn't put it in for tonight. But I did give you the link for that. But what they do is they actually phase in the percentage of the basic star exemptions from the 21 year. So like, for example, this first line, if you had income of $0 to $75,000, you received 163% versus someone who had income of $200 to $250,000, who received 18% of that star amount. And also on that website, you can look up where the check is. So if you haven't received it yet and you think you're eligible, there's a way to look up where your check is. Just some important deadlines. So the fall tax payments should have gone out. They're due by November 10th. Again, if you haven't received your tax bill, you can go on the Nassau County website, mynassupproperty.com, and it will show you your tax bill. January 2nd, all applications for new star applications are due for the 2324 school year, 2324 taxing year also. January 2nd is also the deadline for all exemptions in Nassau County. So if you're someone, if you or someone you know is interested in trying to receive an exemption for the 2324 school year, make sure you have that in by January. And then finally, the crux of really what causes all these variances back and forth, the grievance process opens up on January 2nd, and it is available until March 1st for anyone that is looking to grieve their assessed value. And that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have regarding this. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zakian and Mr. Motisi for those very informative presentations, very timely and helpful. Mr. Zakian, after you asked for questions, I thought of a question. So I'd like to ask you now, if you don't mind. What, if any, information are we as a district privy to in terms of unfortunate school shootings that have happened out of state? Say, for instance, in Uvalde. Are we entitled, we meaning the district, are we entitled to learn any information from those situations so that we can try to be as proactive and as safe as we can be here in Farmingdale?
Great question. As a district itself, we do not purposely reach out to the schools that have gone through these unfortunate type of incidents. The main reason is that the Nassau County Police Department, in conjunction with the FBI and Homeland Security, typically put a presentation together that is extremely detailed. I could promise you it's probably the worst three hours of your year when you have to go there. They will show live videos. They will share information about the breaches that occurred within a specific school, things that the police should have done, things that the school district should have done, the movement of the suspect, the events. You hear live recordings, things that you can't unsee and unhear at any point in time. And like I said, Nassau Police, Homeland Security, FBI put together a tremendous program that is really training for their police officers, but reach out to the school districts and invite us to attend. So they don't hold back in what their details are and what the discussions are. And from that, we learn a tremendous amount. And after those meetings have happened, we sit down and tabletop those discussions with Homeland Security in Nassau County and institute some of the protocols that they tell us. Again, tonight, I did not get into, as Mr. Defendini said, the roots and depth and details of a lot of our protocols, just for the pure fact that we don't want to compromise our safety systems in place. But we have instituted quite a bit of information that's been gleaned from those unfortunate incidents in the district.
Would it be safe to say that you're exposed to incredibly more details than the public would see on the news or on the internet?
100%, 100%. We have live video feed that we see from their security cameras. We have live detailed verbal, you know, interactions with the police amongst themselves as they are trying to negotiate the situation. They will put a detailed, for lack of a better term, a computerized system where there's a red dot who is the assailant. He enters on this floor, comes to this building, and you will hear the video of the police correspondents that are chasing or trailing the suspect, the incidence of gunfire happening, depth of where it was in what classroom, how that red dot moved to another classroom. It's a piece by piece, step by step reenactment in a digital format that we witness and see. So yeah, it's extremely detailed and items that would never be released to the public form.
Very sobering, but very reassuring that we're exposed to that, and we learn from that and hopefully never need to use it. But obviously, more information the better when it comes to the safety of our kids.
Agreed, thank you.
Does any, do any of the other board members have any other questions with respect to the two presentations?
I just have one that I thought of in reference to security. And I was at the safety committee meeting. The blinking light, the strobe light? That's just visual, right? There's no audio that goes with anything, no alarms or anything?
No, the audio does take place when the red panic button is pushed. And that goes to all of the speakers in the building. So there's a loud alarm that you heard, the blaring alarm, followed by the building administrator making a statement that we are going to a lockdown situation, followed by the alarm. We thought about the aspect of, as Ed mentioned before, large-scale student gathering areas, a gymnasium, a cafeteria with 300 students inside of it, that type of thing, who may not recognize that a door just automatically shut in a cafeteria and can't hear the loudspeakers. So those lights are just an additional visual cue to help us to make sure that everybody's aware of a specific situation taking place.
I knew that was a process there, but on the building outside, there's just a strobe light, it's nothing audio, right?
There is. It's the outside speaker system that we have out there that will say it. And we also have, they're not up yet, but you saw the picture of the signs. Internally, we have a sign next to each one. And externally, we have a sign in English and/or Spanish alerting the public that these lights are flashing. We are in the middle of an active situation. Please return to your car and be in safety. So there are external speaker systems in our district, in our schools, that you can communicate and they hear.
Are there any other questions? Again, on behalf of the board, thank you so much, Mr. Motisi, Mr. Zakian, and of course, Mr. Defendini for those presentations. An informed community is a safe community and is a better community. So we do thank you for that. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for our first public participation session. As we state every month, please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone. And we are now open.
Good evening to the board and to Mr. Defendini. My name is Matt. I'm a father in the district, and my address is on file. There's a lot of Long Island school board activity proposing really important resolutions to NISBA about more autonomy at the local level, about policies during contagion outbreak, specifying curriculum and autonomy from our local district versus the state. There's so much activity from SACHM in Massapequa. And I'm just wondering, do you not share the beliefs of these other boards? Or do you not know them? Why doesn't Farmingdale participate on what's such an active Long Island role on some of these really, really great, really forward-thinking proposals at NISBA? Thank you.
I think what Matt's referring to is the NISBA resolutions, which is a part of your typical work, right? It's a part of Kathy's participation at the local level, the regional level, conversations that obviously build to eventual, you know, adoption by the New York State School Boards Association. So I don't know if you want to spend just a minute to talk about the work that you do pertaining to that because it is a part of your work?
I can't, at this moment, talk to a specific resolution. But there's resolutions that are suggested by the New York State School Boards Association, and some of it are not. When reading over the resolutions, we decide as a board whether we support it or not. So I bring that vote to convention. This year, which is annual business meeting, this year it's going to be held virtually on the 18th of October. Like I said, virtually. And I'll bring all our suggestions or thoughts for my resolutions to that meeting. I will listen openly to all the school districts that have a say at that moment and take into consideration what we discuss or go through resolutions as a board. So that's basically the process.
And we also intend to take those policies and potential policies into consideration and then talk amongst ourselves as a board and come to decisions that we will then vote on subsequently. But we are in the process of gathering that information. And as Kathy said, at the next session, which is on the 18th, she will present to us what those proposals were. And again, we will act on them accordingly. So we are aware of what's going on, and we do intend to act on them together collectively as a board in a reasonable and smart fashion.
Hello, everyone. Eric Morrow. My address is on file. One clerical thing I did mention last Board of Ed meeting, I said that I believe that we have now 5,500-something students in the district. And I was told I was wrong. And I said, I got it from Google. But then I went to the Farmingdale School District page, and there's 5,523 people on the front page that says they're enrolled in this school district. So I don't know if it's from Google or the site's wrong, but I couldn't have been wrong unless the site's wrong. So 5,523 people on the school district's page that say they're enrolled in this school. So that's one. So maybe Google was right. Sorry if I slandered them. I want to tell you a personal story of me today. I'm one of seven kids. I grew up in Farmingdale, and I'm the fifth boy of those seven. I'm 10 years younger than my oldest brother. My oldest brother was gay before it was cool to be gay. Ruffest way to grow up I've ever seen. He would bully beyond belief. I was bullied because I was his brother. I fought and still fight like hell for him. I fought for gay marriage, love is love is love. My industry is basically fully gay, lesbian, trans. Some of my best friends are. But this has become hijacked. Their movement and what they fought for and what I fought for has become hijacked. And the flag has become political. And the fact that 10-year-olds in Howitt are forced to see this every day. It's not against gay. It's against the fact that every single time they see these flags or they got to get a pin, or they're thinking about something, and they're confused because every single kid that goes through puberty is confused. And every time they have to think about, am I heterosexual? Am I gay? I like football. I don't even like girls. Am I gay? We're sending them a message subliminally over and over, and we're not supposed to be doing that. And I love that this district has changed because my brother went to this district, and it was miserable for him. And he felt he was in the closet. He got married to a woman, and I knew he was gay. So I get that it's needed, but I don't understand the fact that we're forcing it down our 10, 11, 12, 13-year-olds' faces. Every day, they see it. And when we have announcements on your webpage, and it says the webpage...
30 seconds, Mr. Morrow.
We have announcements that state what's being said on the school announcements at Howitt. And five straight days, it was omitted that you were going to give out Coming Out Day pins. Five straight days, it wasn't on the website, which I have screenshots of. But five days, Mr. Gavallas got on there and announced it. Omission's a lie, people. So I don't know how that happened either, but it doesn't make sense. And I want you to know that I'm here to fight with you, not against you. But when it seems like you guys are omitting things, it looks really bad for this district. Thank you.
So just two pieces. One, Eric, not to go back at you with regard to the student count. That's a silly item on the bottom left-hand corner of our website, which I just pulled up. It says 5,130. I don't know where you're getting it. But just give me a call, send an email. We could figure out where you're getting whatever you're getting so we can get on the same page. That's certainly a silly one. With regard to the other issue that you brought up, with regard to the flags and conversations that we've had with parents over the course of the last several days, it's good to know that we're on the same page in terms of ensuring that we provide support to all of our students. That is something that we do every single day, that we come to work. We understand that none of our students are the same. No two students are the same. Everyone has their own unique circumstances. And in order for them to feel like they are valued and that they are a part, we have to be able to respond in ways that create that environment for those respective students. What you're referring to, which is tipping the scale, I think that that's where we disagree, right? Whether or not we tip the scale and we go too far. We have a GSA club here at the middle school. We have a GSA club at the high school. We work with our students and empower them to have voice. It's not unilateral, right? We do have advisors. We do have administration that are a part of that conversation, you know, to make sure that we do know where that line is, and it doesn't go too far, and we're not crossing that line. That's where we disagree. But it is good to know that we are in agreement with the fact that we provide that level of support. I think all of us up here, many of the people in the audience can speak to stories of circumstances that they've had in their lives, where those people have felt marginalized. I feel bad for your brother. I can also speak to those circumstances in my own life, as again can many people up here. We're trying to prevent that from happening. We're trying to make sure that our students feel like they are connected to their schools and that the staff in these buildings love them and appreciate them for who they are. I can appreciate the discourse. I can appreciate the fact that there are differences in the way in which people might think we should do that. If we're all operating from that same framework, though, that we are here for all of our kids, and we do need to provide an appropriate environment for them, I think it's a good starting point for continued conversations as to how we can provide the support down the line.
Hello, I'm Caitlin McGregor. I guess I could say my address is on file. I don't really know the rules, but hello, everybody. Hello, board. Mr. Defendini, thank you so much for that response. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I want to thank the board and thank the people in power in our district for making all of our students feel safe. When I was growing up, kids weren't coming out. It was something that would put you at risk for bullying, something that would put you at risk for violence. And when Smithtown Library Board took away their pride displays, I remember talking to my fourth grader about what was happening there. And he super nonchalantly said, oh, yeah, I have a couple of friends. They're lesbians. And I was like, oh, okay, cool, that's great. And it is as normal and accepted as kids can be. They're full of love and openness. And I really appreciate that our district creates a safe place for all of our children, including our LGBTQ and trans kids. And thank you for that.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Sewalski, 11 Ballin Court. It was brought to my attention that there was a fundraiser going on, and it's a drag queen bingo night. I'd like to know if the board was aware of this happening because that's not part of the policies. What is the board's policy on fundraising? And what's the board's policy on accepting the funds from that fundraiser? Because there's 13, 14-year-old kids being asked to attend this event, sell tickets for this event, and volunteer at it. This does not belong happening to these kids. It doesn't belong in our school district. And let me be clear, if there's an adult here that wants to go to a... And let me be clear, if there's an adult here that wants to go to a drag queen night with your family, get together with your friends, by all means have at it. It's not about that. It's about subjecting kids to this. Drag queen bingo or any sexual content in any kind of fundraiser should not be allowed in the schools. It doesn't mix with children. This is a good community, family-oriented. A fundraiser like this eliminates that. I cannot ask my mother or father to attend a fundraiser for drag queen bingo to support the schools. There's a long list of acceptable fundraisers for kids that age to be involved in. We have a juniors program at the Firehouse with children the same age that are being asked to participate in this fundraiser. They held a pancake breakfast and did very well. This is not something that we should have in our schools. I'll leave it that way. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike. We're in total agreement. That fundraiser was not approved by the school district. It was not a school-supported or a school sanctioned. There's a policy that exists at the Board level that specifies the manner in which fundraisers are allowed to happen, right? There's certain approvals that have to transpire. Games of chance, alcohol, you know, things of that sort, absolutely not, are not a part of our, our protocols. We would never approve anything of that sort. There are fundraisers that parents choose to take on their own. They, they do it without our permission. We can't, as you could imagine, control the behavior of our parents. They have a right to do what our parents choose to do on their own. They have a right to decide how they want to or don't choose to involve their families. I can't direct a family how to behave outside the purview of our, our school system, certainly I wouldn't want to. That was not a fundraiser that was approved by the school district. We actually did find out that there was going on. We found out about it shortly or around the same time as you did. We worked with the people in question. They rebuilt the flyer in a way to take off any information that connected back to us or to the team in question. They were very compliant with that. They, they, they did a nice job amending the flyer accordingly. We put a little statement out on Facebook to notify people of the fact that it wasn't approved by us because this wouldn't be something that we would approve and we're moving ahead. It, I'm not going to say that it's the first time that that's happened. I've been in this district a long time and I can tell you that other teams over the years have had games of chance and other things that are not approved by our school system. They do it on their own. They raise the money and then they choose to buy their team and their children things with that money. That's their prerogative, not ours. But again, we did not approve, nor would we approve a fundraiser of that kind.
Just like to know, nobody answered Eric's questions about five straight days of the district announcements being made to the kids and something different being on the website that shows a deliberate act of trying to say something to the children and not let the parents see that it's being said. And it can't be an ad lib, oh, I forgot to say it with something that important, okay? My kid's 11 years old, still sleeps with a stuffed animal and comes up to me instead of asking me about a math problem or something else, says, Dad, what's coming out day? This is a conversation that I need to have with my child, not have the school take over and say, we're gonna decide to have the conversation with your child. We're gonna decide to put stickers all around the school that say Safe Space with a network that they can go to that has Safe Space hangouts for teens and teens is 13 to 24-year-olds. I don't know when we lost our minds to allow 13 to 24, 21-year-olds to hang out, but a 24-year-old is not a teen. And it also has safer space, safer supplies for safer sex and condoms. What is wrong with you people that you allow this? Have you not learned your lesson from last year when a teacher provided inappropriate content and an animation of a sex change operation to children? Then you scratch your heads and say, oh, the internet's a bad place. Yes, it is a bad place. You're providing links to kids that bring it to their laps through their Chromebooks. And every time we catch you, you say, oh, we'll try to do better. We're doing a fantastic job. No, you're not. We shouldn't have to sit there and be watchdogs for you and see what you're doing next. We shouldn't have to say, hey, what did they discuss in school today? Oh, that's funny. That wasn't on the morning announcements. Is it a safe space to have a virtual hangout for 13 to 24-year-olds? Is it? Because virtual hangouts usually then lead to face-to-face hangouts. You're providing an unsafe environment and it's ironic that it's on a sticker that says Safe Space. It's an unsafe space. No other club is pushed down their throats like that club. Let me be clear about something. When I ran for the school board last year, just because I wanted to have parental choice and represent the parents in this community that want to have parental choice about when they want to discuss intimate topics like this with their kids, not the school district, I was labeled a bigot, a homophobe, a transphobe. That's not it. I have zero hatred in my heart for anybody that wants to have any kind of feelings for anyone in this world. That is not my purview. It's not my decision and I shouldn't even have to say I'm cool with it because that in itself sounds stupid. Who am I to decide what somebody else wants to love or be with? But at this age group, 10 to 13, it is inappropriate. How many people in this room in this community or up there would like it if I came over to your houses and sat with female members of your household to discuss intimate sexual topics? Would you be comfortable with that? No, you would not.
Mr. Karimi, I'm sorry, that's your three minutes if you want to come back-
I didn't get a 30-second heads up, ma'am.
Well, I, I didn't want to stop you. Fortun-, unfortunately, you were-
On a roll. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
The, the issue of sex ed and topics of this ilk are obviously very controversial, very difficult. It's a very fine line. For us as Board members, it's a fine line. For the people in administration, it's a fine line. For parents, it's a fine line. What's right, what's wrong, what's not enough, what's too much? This is ever-evolving and Parsa, like you said, you know, technology is a blessing and it's a curse. You know, we, we bring technology into the schools to try to enhance education. It's not foolproof. We learned that last year. We'll probably learn it again. That's part of the learning process. I, I think what we all need to understand is that there is a commonality here and the commonality is that we want to advocate for our children, all of our children. And what's advocacy for me may be different for you, may be different for Joe, may be different for Sue. It's ever-evolving and it's not easy. It's very difficult. But there is something that we all need to understand and learn from. There's advocacy, there's being an advocate and being someone that's indoctrinating and clearly the latter is wrong. We don't want to indoctrinate anyone. That's not the school's role. You can laugh, I'm trying to be serious here. There is no indoctrination. You can have your perspective and you're entitled to that. We can disagree, but one thing I want everyone to understand, speaking as a parent first, speaking as a community member second and as a Board member third, we all are entitled to our beliefs. We all are entitled to our opinions. You're entitled to come up here and disagree. You're entitled to come up here and say that we're wrong. I'm not going to tell you that's right or wrong, but the, the problem that I see, not only in our community, but in our country and even broader than that, is that we have become a society where if we disagree on issues, we're enemies. If you disagree with me, I'm almost, I have to hate you. There must be something wrong with you. And that's not what democracy is about. That's not what this is about. We can have our opinions and we can disagree, but at the end of the day, we're all parents. And you know Eric and Parsa and Mike who came up here and spoke, if I asked you, do you care about the children? I know your answer would be yes and I would believe that because I've seen you in the community and I've seen what you guys do. And I would hope that you would extend that same courtesy to us where if you ask us collectively, do you care about our kids? The answer is hell, yes. Can we improve on what we do? Sure. Absolutely. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be advocates and we may disagree on the end result, but we're all trying to get to that same result. So we'll work with you. We are not here to work against you. You're not our enemies because you disagree with anything. We are not your enemies. We are members of this community. We want to improve it. We want the schools to be better. If you ask anyone up here, what do you think about the schools? I think we'd all say we're very proud of where we are, but I think we would also say we can be better and we will strive to be better. But the only way we get better is by working together, not against each other. We will work together and we will strive to be better and we will strive to be the best advocates we can be because that's our role, not us, Board. That's our role as members of this community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak during the first public participation? Because I realize I made a mistake. Before we went into public, I forgot to ask Paul about his presentation regarding old business. So if, if anyone wants to speak, you can come up to the mic, obviously. If not, I would just turn to Mr. Devandini for that omission and again, that was my fault.
Yeah, not a problem. You know, just obviously in regard to two items that were brought up at the last meeting, questions were brought up by two of our community members. One had to do with recess and the other one had to do with, I believe, girls' flag football. And Mr. Zakian and I have been a part of conversations pertaining to both. I'll turn it over to Mr. Zakian for a report out on where we are with regard to those two items.
Thank you. So a, as you mentioned, during the, the public participation portion of the September meeting, a request came to the Board of Ed to look into the possibility of fielding a girls' flag football team at Farmingdale High School for the current school year. As a background, girls' flag football was launched as a pilot varsity sport in Nassau County last year with nine teams and as a high school activity in Suffolk County with eight teams. And this took place last spring and was a pilot program that was sponsored by the New York Jets in conjunction with Nike. Following that board meeting, I spoke with our Director of Athletics to see if she has had any students or coaches approach her regarding interest for a girls' flag football team. She informed me that she did not have any conversation with any students and/or potential coaches for such a team. The deadline for filing for a team in this coming spring's league expired one week after that conversation, which obviously was not enough time to pull something together. So in a subsequent conversation, I asked our Director of Athletics to produce flyers in February for posting at the high school and the middle school in hopes of gauging interest amongst the girls within those two buildings for a high school team next year for the following year, which would be in the spring of 2024. So we were currently working on that. As far as the recess, once again, during the public participation portion of the September meeting, a question regarding recess was brought to the Board. And if you recall, Mr. Devandini responded to the parent that he would, he would absolutely acknowledge and have a meeting with this community member to discuss the, their concern in greater detail. A meeting was held then with, with the parent, Mr. Devandini and myself, and we had a wonderful conversation and we were able to further ascertain the concerns of the parent. We are now working with our building administration to establish the protocols that they use for recess, especially in regards to withholding recess as a form of punishment to the elementary students. The Board, as you know, is also in receipt of a number of emails from members of our community regarding this topic. The emails also asked for the Board to consider a review of Policy 5405 and that is where recess is discussed. So discussions regarding the policy with the Board of Education will commence once we continue our dialogue with the building administration and we would come back to you about the issues of concerns, especially regarding punishment and using recess as a form of punishment to inform the Board to see if they would like us to open up the policy to investigate and/or change it.
And again, I apologize for that omission. Does anyone on the Board have any questions with respect to the girls' flag football issue and recess before we move on?
I do. In reference to the girls' flag football, I guess we'd also have to see what the cost would be and how it might affect the other girls' teams that play in that particular season.
Yeah, there, there is a concern regarding the second part of, of what you just said in that it's offered in the spring and we have a number of teams in the spring that the girls are offered. There is levels of lacrosse, varsity and JV lacrosse, softball and track. So there is a concern or a question about the number of students that we may have that express interest so that we could field a team. And the reason why we want to push through with the advertisement in February is that if we do gain interest, we will include that in our budget in preparation for next year's budget so we can have it if, if it does in fact pan out.
So it's probably premature to even ask this question, but would it be more intra-mural or would it be intra where we would look into playing with different schools or different associations?
No, we would join, it would, it's a pilot program at the varsity level within Section 8 Nassau County Athletics. And again, it was a pilot program last year with nine schools in Nassau. It's continuing to expand as people are gaining interest in it and we will participate in the Section 8 classification that they're offering.
Thank you again. Any other questions? I call for a motion to approve the September 8 Board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8, 2022 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13, 2022 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14, 2022 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 14, 2022 regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
So the Board had actually received two emails this month. The first one was regarding the lunch and recess as Mr. Zakian had described. The second one was a complimentary email from a resident regarding the parent's square communication system.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the Board?
I'll go first. Just to piggyback what Mr. Devandini had mentioned earlier, band camp, my second year in attending that. This year we had over 300 students participating between marching band students, our delirats and new this year is the color guard. So exciting for the kids. We had 40, I believe there were 41 parent chaperones. The entire music department all comes out to support one another on the field. But one of the things to mention is the first night, if you didn't hear on social media from neighbors and friends, is we did have a blackout. The whole town went down and if you were ever up there, there's nothing around. It was dark. So you know, you start to think, are the kids going to be able to acclimate? Are they going to be comfortable? They're going to be anxious. All these things are going through your head and we had one building that had a generator and of course we all went there, there was light and the kids took several hours and together, working together, put on a whole karaoke night and you would have never known that the town had no service as far as light and fun. They came together, kids of all different walks of life, kids, you know, from different corners of, of everything came together and really made the best of something that could have been awful. I mean, I was pretty upset when I realized I had no cabin lighting or anything like that, but it did go on in the middle of the night. But again, I, I've said this in the past, when I went last year, you watch these kids on day one and they're learning their marching and half the kids are going left, a quarter are going forward, another quarter are going the other way and there's tubes banging into each other and it's, they're just a hot mess when they start and the amount of work and time that goes into it. And then they give, give the, the chaperones, the parents a performance the day we leave on Sunday and what they show us is just unbelievable. So the efforts behind, you know, again, you're taking 300-plus students, ninth through 12th grade, some of them never knowing each other and they work together and I hope to see faces come out on this Friday night, which is homecoming and the kids will be performing and it's just an incredible, incredible show. So thank you to all the staff and the parents and of course to students for all their hard work for that. Secondly, last night, myself, Kathy Lively, Cherie Jones, we attend, attended the first SEPTA meeting, which is the Special Ed, Special Education PTA meeting. It is their annual meet and greet, although always amazingly attended. I felt like last night the room was even fuller. Every building principal was there. We had assistant principals, the entire special edu- education administration was there. We had new faces. I don't want to say old faces, but, you know, older than new faces there. And people spoke their truths. It was a great place for someone who's starting out in the district or just realizing, you know, recent that their child might be struggling, that that is truly your people in that room. And I think I said that when I spoke last night. But there were tears, there was laughter, but to see such a part of the community come together was absolutely beautiful. Ms. Allison Palazzo, who is the president of SEPTA, she did a fantastic job pulling that together last night. And again, just to support, we had teachers service provide. I mean, it was a packed room at Northside's cafeteria last night. I was so proud to be a part of that meeting. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So the Chamber of Commerce Comedy Night is a fundraiser. It's going to be held this week. It's sold out, which is a great thing because a lot of people are attending. That means money will be made, and the money will go towards scholarships for our high school seniors once they figure out what the proceeds will be. So that's a really great event. The Chamber is also having many ribbon-cutting ceremonies. They've had at least once or twice every week, and that's great because it brings our businesses together, brings more businesses into our community and able to enjoy each other's restaurants and stores and just activities we have. So we're working on the Chamber events as we speak. Farmingdale Youth Council, many of the programs that our organizations have are up and running. Farmingdale Youth Council Winter Program itself, there's still some registration going on for the recreation program. Recreation program is, one is held at Solsom School from 9 to 12, and the other one for recreation is held at Woodward Parkery from 12 to 3. So if you're interested in sending your child there, check the Farmingdale Youth Council website, and the registration is going on now. And I think the first program date will be November 5th, so look into that. There's also sewing, gymnastics, swim, and all those programs are just starting now. And swim is very, very popular, swim lessons. So look into that if you're interested. The safety, Arlene and I were able to attend the safety committee meeting, and it was fantastic. You had the presentation today, so we were able to learn about many things that are going on in our district and have some input into that. So Mr. Zakian, thank you for all you're doing to run the committee and to get the word out and ask for advice of what we see also, what's going on in our schools. So thank you for that. Anything, Arlene? I think we, it was a great presentation, and there was a lot of committee members that were there, which is great to see, people coming out and being a part of that committee. So thank you again. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Thank you all for your input. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through H, 2A through G, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the tax levy?
Here we go. All right. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Resolved that the following budget of necessary claims and expenditures for school purposes in the Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the towns of Oyster Bay and Babylon, State of New York, for the school year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, in the amount of $182,892,350 is hereby accepted. Resolved that the sum of $103,445,814 being the amount to be raised by taxation for the portion of Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, and the sum of $30,293,629 being the amount to be raised by taxation for the portion of Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the town of Babylon, County of Suffolk, for the school year 2022-2023, be levied upon the taxable property of said school district as certified to by the Boards of Assessors for the school year 2022 to 2023 for the purposes specified within this resolution. Resolved that the Assistant to the Superintendent for Business of the Farmingdale Union Free School District, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, and Town of Babylon, Suffolk County, is hereby authorized and directed to file a certified copy of these resolutions with the Board of Assessors, Nassau County, and the Town of Babylon, New York, after receiving finalized assessed values from the Departments of Assessment, Nassau County, and Town of Babylon, and finalized equalization rates from the Office of Real Property Tax Services. Amount of assessed valuation apportioned base in the confines of Farmingdale Union Free School District, Nassau County, and Town of Babylon being $8,689,993 and $13,23,513, respectively, and that the equalization rates for apportioning said tax levy to Nassau County and Town of Babylon, respectively, as recommended by the State Board of Equalization are .0017 and .0087, and that the aforementioned figures be placed in the file of minutes of the regular meeting of October 12, 2022.
Were there any appurtenances?
Oh, not in this one, thankfully.
Can I have a second? Ms. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. In short, this discussion and action item gives us the ability to transmit the final certified numbers to the county of Nassau, Nassau County and Suffolk County for their taxing purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Motisi. This is a roll call vote, so I'll start with Mr. Giordano. Anthony just threw us off. Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Lively? Mrs. Sodi?
Aye.
Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
And I will be an aye as well. Motion carries.
Is Mr. Goldberg voting?
Yes.
I didn't even see Mike's. Sorry, Mike. Mr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Snuck in there. Okay. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the revised board committee assignments for the 2022-2023 school year?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Board of Education adopt the revised Board of Education standing committee assignments for the 2022-2023 school year. Committee members will serve until a new membership is established.
Does the board have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to table the NISBA business meeting resolutions?
I make a motion to table the New York State School Boards Association Business Meeting Resolutions.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to appoint an interim treasurer?
I make a motion to appoint Annette Savino as interim treasurer for all Farmingdale Union Free School District funds for the 2022-2023 school year affected November 1, 2022, and to approve an agreement for interim treasurer services contingent upon a written contract, contracts, or addenda reviewed and approved by the district's council, and to authorize the board president to sign the appropriate agreement.
Mr. Motisi?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. Included in the consent agenda tonight was the resignation of the school business administrator, who is also the district treasurer. Mr. Ernst has been with the district for nine years. He has been my right hand through all of this, through all the budgets and everything that we've done together. He will be missed. He will definitely, big shoes to fill. But in the meantime, as he moves on to bigger and better things, we do have business that we need to attend to, and part of that is the district treasurer, which is an integral part of not only managing the cash flows of the district, but signing every single check that leaves this district. As you're all aware, this is a board-appointed position, and we had to move quickly to get an interim before Mr. Ernst leaves the district. Annette comes highly recommended from several school districts that I spoke to, as well as our independent auditors, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has regarding this appointment.
Any questions? Just to piggyback on what you said, Mr. Ernst, you know, oftentimes, people that are behind the scenes don't get the credit that they deserve. Brian works so hard and continues to work hard. He's been a phenomenal asset to our community. For those that don't know who he is, he's done a phenomenal amount of work. Obviously, Mr. Motisi, you do a lot of work, but without Brian, I'm sure you would be the first to say there's no way you could do what you do without him helping you out. So he will be very missed. Without any question asked, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation session. Again, please state your name and address clearly when stepping up to the microphone.
Hi, Lou Bell, whatever the file business is. I just want to say, Carol, you're up in my neck of the woods when you're there at Band Camp. When you have a blackout, let the kids have a moment of silence and look at the stars. It's amazing what you'll see up there that you won't see here on the island. And they need, there's too much noise in their lives now. They need a few minutes to just, like, thank you for, I know Paul probably added yoga to some of the programs in the schools. The kids need more times to be quiet. There's too much noise. They're being bombarded with all sorts of things that I'm so glad I didn't get bombarded with when I was a kid, and I actually feel sad for the kids today. But anyway, just a thought, Sue.
Thank you for that. Just so you know, it was pouring. There were no stars in sight, but that would be a great suggestion, and I hope we never are in that situation again, but thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for your time. My name is Kaz Karimi, 7 East Spencer Street, Farmingdale. As a father of two young daughters in Northside, I want to thank you for all your efforts to keep my kids safe and all the other kids in the school district. Just to touch base with the conversations that you heard so far with the people that came up to speak, I am a registered nurse, a trauma nurse, for 25 years. I work in two separate trauma hospitals on Long Island, representing all orthopedic trauma cases that come into those places. And I believe that the conversation that you're missing is that parents would like for you to reconsider the age and the amount of progression that you seem to support when it comes to sexuality. Sexuality may be just as personal for many people as religion. I'm sure if there was a school district that was handing out turbans and telling people to wear turbans to support the Muslim communities, I'm sure that would make many people uncomfortable. What we're saying is that let's give our kids a little bit of credit. They're a lot smarter than we think. They're exposed to many, many things with iPads and many things online that we didn't have when we were younger. And I think that kids generally don't see color. They don't see hate. They don't see any indifference like adults do. And I believe that most of that comes from homes. I'd rather you put your energy into kids that don't have nutrition at home or maybe are being physically abused by parents or family members than to have such a progressed, serious note of allowing them to have this notion of being open with their sexuality. If you have the center in your schools where you can offer counseling, and they know that any issue that they have at home, they're open to speak to your counselors about it, that would suffice, that they can come to you and speak to that. But I think that kids generally get along with each other, and they already know at an earlier age what their sexuality may be, and they will find a way to figure things out on their own, and they're a lot more receptive to each other's feelings than we think. And again, I applaud you for your time. I appreciate everything that you do for the kids to keep them safe, and have a good night.
Hi, I'm Tom Alessandro, address on file. Happy belated Columbus Day. The, a couple of things, I guess I just kind of heard, Raf, I think you had mentioned that this is a democracy, and glad to hear you say that. I think it's somewhat ironic with the way that the board was, had an open position this summer and the way it was filled. The control was really taken away from the Farmingdale citizens by stepping down one month after the election. Mario really gave, really didn't do right by the parents of Farmingdale. And that's very un-American, in my opinion. The board, despite seven, had seven-plus qualified candidates, your words, but yet you all voted unanimously for one person. Now, Cherie, I wish you well. I don't know you, but I really do hope you do a great job. But I don't know much about you. I don't know what questions were asked. I don't know what your answers were. I don't know why you didn't run just a month before or why we haven't seen you here at a board meeting. Unfortunately, your appointment does come with an asterisk, and I do hope that we could move forward, and again, I do wish you well. As you know, democracy is very important. We had about a third of the votes for Parsa in the call, and they deserve to be sitting in those seats. I think also, I wanted to understand a little, you, again, don't think that there's indoctrination when something happens day in, day out, again and again and again. I guess I just want to understand, what is your line of indoctrination? Like, where would you say, all right, this is where the line is?
Let me say a couple of things. First, you say that what we did was unfair. You understand that we could have appointed someone without doing the interviews. We went above and beyond to open up to everyone. We opened up to the entire community, and we had a handful of people that came in, including Parsa. And I don't want to relitigate last year's election. I don't want to go into that again. I will say, in perfect candidness, Parsa's interview was amazing. He did a great job. It's no knock against him. I know he's sitting here. I'm not saying because he's here. He had a great interview.
I'm sure he did.
But to denigrate not only what we did as a collective, but also, in my opinion, to denigrate Cherie Jones, whose interview was phenomenal.
Just for the record, I did not do that.
Well, you said it was an asterisk.
I said I don't know her very well.
There's no asterisk next to Cherie's name.
Well, because she wasn't voted in from a democratic standpoint, is what I'm saying.
We adhered to the policy. Again, we went above and beyond. Now, I will say this. You said you didn't see her at a board meeting. If being at a board meeting was a prerequisite for being a board member, I wouldn't be sitting here. My first board meeting was as a Board of Ed trustee, so I'll be very candid about that. I didn't come to a single board meeting. Everyone is entitled to become involved in the community when they feel is the right time, okay? So again, I really don't want to go into that narrative again, but it's a false narrative. And I'm, again, I'm proof. I'm using myself as an example. I think that we, as a collective, need to understand that there was a process in place. We adhere to that process, and again, we could have had 300 candidates. We could have had 3,000 candidates. It was open to everyone in this community. We gave everyone that opportunity to come in and to be interviewed. The interview was a very pure process. I'm proud of the way we did it, and we chose the best candidate. And I don't have to speak for Cherie. She's more than capable of speaking for herself, but I'm proud to have her on this board. She's going to do phenomenal things. She's an incredible person. She will advocate for our children extremely well. And again, I'm not saying she's up here.
I'm sure she will, and Cherie, again, I did not say any negative about you. I don't know you, and that was my point. I just, again, you have seven votes, and you all voted unanimously. I don't know, maybe you guys talked about it or not, but I would think with as many good candidates, and it wasn't just Parsa who was a good candidate, there's other ones. But it's just amazing that all of you voted the same. But it is what it is, and again, we want to move on. But just as far as the indoctrination part, right, can you speak a little bit about that? Kind of where is your line of what you think would be too much versus the right amount?
Sure. So I think what we're referring to here is not indoctrination, but acceptance, right? That's where that line is that you're trying to draw and that we try to draw every single day. No, it's not a simple thing that I can sit up here, nor can you, nor can anybody else clearly align with what is or what isn't, something that someone's being indoctrinated into something. By definition, indoctrinating is, on the website, to teach, to fully accept the ideas, opinions, and beliefs of a particular group, and to not consider other ideas, opinions... opinions, and beliefs of a particular group and to not consider other ideas, opinions, and beliefs. What we're trying to do is to empower our students to have a voice, or some of our students who don't feel like they have a voice, some of our students similar in vein to some of the conversations that we had earlier in the meeting, where some people who were used by example, who felt like they were alienated, they weren't connected, they didn't feel like they were a part of the school system. We are doing everything in our power to make sure that we don't repeat the mistakes of our history by creating a subgroup of students who don't feel like they're accepted for who they are. We listen to their voice, and we try to find that middle ground where we can give them the voice to be who they are, where we can give them the voice to feel accepted while at the same time being sensitive to not go too far by creating an environment where a political ideology is being shared, or we're trying to coerce someone into believing something. What I would recommend is that if your children at any point in time feel that they're being indoctrinated, please feel free to have a conversation first with the teacher. Most of our teachers are pretty good about having conversations with parents about what's going on in their respective classrooms. They will openly talk about the concerns that are happening. Just earlier this evening, Mr. Karimi brought up a concern with regard to a teacher last year that I was working with. She made a mistake, undoubtedly. She admitted to the fact that she made a mistake. If there was a phone call made to her earlier in the year to cite the fact that a mistake was made, she would readily have admitted to that and felt really badly that there wasn't more effort put into making sure that that site didn't go to a particular place. But to say that in terms of a unilateral, to say that, or to create a framework that that's how we do business here is an unfair framework. It doesn't paint an accurate picture, I believe, of what's going on in the schools, and I have a lot of vantage points as well, Mr. Alessandro, of what's going on within our schools, both as an administrator here and both as a parent. Where that line, just let me finish, and then you can jump in, absolutely. Where that line is drawn is something that I do trust our staff with, and I do trust in the fact that if I have a concern as a parent, I can pick up the phone, I can speak to a teacher about a conversation that happened in a respective classroom, and I would get a solid answer as to how that played out. I've never known a circumstance, or very few circumstances ever, where those conversations don't go well. It's a more productive way, I think, of moving this conversation forward, is if you have a concern, go right to the source, have that conversation with that respective person, and understand how that might have impacted your child.
Okay, well, again, I think you're hearing a lot of concerns here, and it just does seem like they're just being brushed off, so I do hope that you consider some thought into what you've heard today and what you've heard in the past as well. Thank you.
If it's okay, I would like to just make one statement and say that during the interview process, I was instructed that it was a pure process. As Ralph said, everyone was asked the same questions. I was given the same allotted time to answer the questions. There was not, there were no follow-up questions allowed after giving my answer because they wanted to make it a level playing field for everyone who interviewed for the position. I can't speak to why it was a unanimous decision. If I want to, you know, be proud, I could say, because I'm awesome, but, you know, that's for you to get to know later on. In terms of me not being present at any board meetings, you are correct. I have not ever attended any board meetings, but I have been very active within the school district, being very active on the PTA of my children's schools. And when I have had, as a parent, concerns about different policies, I have talked to different administrators. I've had meetings with other concerned parents, with Mr. Duffendini. So I have been a very active parent and community member in the district, even though you may not have seen me present here in this particular forum.
Again, congratulations, and certainly wish you all the best in this position.
Thank you, Cherie, and welcome once again.
I stated for this late one, Eric, you have my address on file. Ralph, we all have archaic laws in this world. We know we always go forward. That was an archaic law. That's all he's saying. You may have done everything right. You obviously did. You're a lawyer, you know what your rights are. He's saying it wasn't done democratically. That's all. Cherie, I'm really looking forward to meet you. That was very funny, by the way, and a good response. So, obviously, you killed the interview. It is what it is. We got to move forward. Ralph, I do appreciate your open communication and the fact that you are responding, but some of the stuff that's responded, you're ignoring stuff. So I asked a specific point. Five straight days of announcements, everything on the, online, five straight days, everything literally labeled except coming out day. Five times that happened. There is screenshots, there is videos, it's been sent to me by many people. So when I'm done with this, I would love that answer as to how that was omitted, just that, five times, because omission's a lie. Anyone that's married knows omission's a lie. You go to a bar, and some girl's there, and your wife asks you, who are you with? And you tell them, there was just me and my boys, and then she finds out that that girl was there, and now you lied. Could be divorce. So omission is a lie. It's that simple. I will let you know that Ms. Geiger, who the teacher is, I know she retired, she did not admit to that mistake. She actually fought online, it was a crazy Facebook thing that Ralph probably saw, because he was online a lot at that time, and when she finally was presented with the evidence, which if it wasn't done, she would never have admitted to it, then said, oh, I made a mistake. So that's an answer to that one. I understand that we're going to make mistakes. I understand we're going to do all this, but the communication back and forth needs to be fair, all right? So what we're trying to tell you is, Paul, you keep on saying we agree to disagree. We do. All I'm saying is, maybe we've gone so far with that pendulum swing that we're marginalizing the non-people, and there are kids that do feel odd, and if they don't agree with that group, then they're the ones marginalized, but we're not going to send them to the counselor because they're not going to feel comfortable to do that, because it's prevalent throughout the entire Howitt at an age that 10 and 13-year-olds are now thinking about their sexuality every day rather than thinking about what they should be thinking about. And I'm not, I'm not an idiot. I was 10. I thought about my sexuality, but there were kids that didn't. I'm just explaining to you guys that it seems that it's gone too far, and I'm happy we're trying to be inclusive to these children, but I don't want to go so far with this pendulum that it feels like we're marginalizing the other people. Now, last thing, 30 seconds, I got you.
30 seconds.
Last thing, the reason why it is so important, Cherie, to everyone here, but it's really just bringing up spilled milk, when they had, which you weren't at, a meeting, Mr. Goldberg brought up the fact that Parsa hadn't voted for a school board, and everyone freaked out and booed and whatever, and they thought they had like a gotcha moment, right? So the reason why everyone keeps on bringing up that they haven't seen you here is because it doesn't make sense that the board member that was on the board, that was the president last year, thought that was an insane thing, that Parsa had never voted, but then unanimously they put you on the board, you'd never been to a board meeting. That's why they're saying that. I just want you to be understanding of the background. Thank you. I'd like the five announcement thing answered.
So let me respond in two ways. One, I'm sure you want to follow the open meetings laws. Please refrain, and this is not only for you, it's a public service announcement to the entire community. If you do come up to the mic as part of a public session, you cannot bring up specific staff members' names at the microphone. So again, I'm sure you weren't doing that intentionally. Please make sure that community members have that as a point of reference in the future. The second point is, you know, there's a lot there with regard to the five point. I can't say that I can speak to every action or post or message. We could certainly take a look at it. I can report back at the next meeting, but I don't have anything specific to respond to as far as the manner in which a PA announcement was made, or what was there, or what was omitted. I'd have to ask the building what transpired and get back to you. There's no way for me to answer something that specific on point, you know, sitting up here, so we will get back to you.
Mr. Moro, what's the point? You were talking apples and oranges because you said voting and being at board meetings. A does not equal B. One does not equal two. I said two different things, and you're comparing them as apples and oranges. Just pointing that out.
Hello, George Andropoulos, 21 Wallon Avenue. I just wanted to thank everybody for their support for TEDx Farmingdale. We had our last, last ever event this past Saturday, TEDx Farmingdale 2022 Legacy at Farmingdale High School was an incredible event. It was our fourth event and final event that I'm going to be executive producing. I just wanted to go over some numbers and some people's names. Is it okay if I, if I share names of people that have participated in?
As long as it's not specific to a particular person. Just use them in terms of like their title or their position or who they are.
Not names of people that, this was just for purposes of?
Just not if they're not employees. That is, that is correct. No matter what the circumstances, no employee names could be mentioned.
Got it. Okay, okay. Okay, so over the course of our four events, we have had 65 speakers at TEDx Farmingdale. Two of these events have been at Farmingdale High School. All four would have been, had it not been for the pandemic. 65 speakers, 17 of which were dailers in one way or another. We have had, over the first three events, 949,108 views on our TEDx talks that came from TEDx Farmingdale. When we publish this year, which will be in about a month or so, we will be well over a million views on these, on these videos, well, well over a million. Could be a million and a half, 2 million, once we publish. That is a huge deal. These ideas worth spreading, the TED platform, a lot of our kids use this in their classrooms, whether it's junior high school, high school, college. These talks go on and live forever in, in terms of educating people, and I'm super proud to have been able to bring these people to the stage for their messages and ideas to live on. And so I just want to mention the names of the people that have from Farmingdale in one way or another have been associated with the platform. I'll leave out names of employees. Stella Lugo, former Farmingdale High School graduate, Dr. Noel Cutter, a Farmingdale parent, Dylan Gaffarian, who is a faculty member of Farmingdale College. Those three actually all joined our team after the first year. We have a assistant principal from one of our elementary schools that spoke. Pete Bronski, fellow daler, class of '97. Nicole Bruno, Mike LaPetry, former daler and former assemblyman. Randy Bonagora, parent in the district. Two students, so I won't mention their names, two students that were active students when they gave their TED Talks, a seventh grader and a 12th grader, which is incredible. Angelique Robertson, a Farmingdale College student at the time, another middle school teacher. David Chometsky, Farmingdale resident. Mark and John Cronin, the owners of John's Crazy Socks, which are now in Farmingdale. They run their business out of Farmingdale, incredible guys. Gozy Eustenner, who's a faculty member of Farmingdale College, and Dr. Dana Bataglia, my good friend, a Farmingdale parent. All 17 of these dailers got up there on the red dot and gave these incredible talks, and I'm so proud of them. I want to thank, real quick, Joe Hassett for helping us this year, and in the first year, Jeff Pritzker for helping us in the first year and his advisement, Mr. Herman from the high school for helping us this year, and all of the students that volunteered this year, which were provided by two of the high school teachers from the theater department. It's bittersweet to walk away from this event, but I want to thank you guys for your support in putting this event out there, and, you know, and I hope that we made you guys proud and this district proud as far as what we've done with this event. So thank you.
George, I'd just like to make a comment. I've had the pleasure of being aboard the journey and photographing your events for the last four years, and it was an honor to hear some of the most profound speakers and what they had to speak from, and the fact that you started here in Farmingdale High School, came full circle four years later, and ended it here, was pretty intense, and I think your passion, everybody saw your passion for what you were trying to do. And again, congratulations. It was really an amazing, amazing journey.
Good evening. Matt. Mr. Motisi, okay, so the consent item for the interim treasurer, so our prior treasurer stepped down. The interim treasurer, the consent item is written as an agreement. Is this person not going to be a full-time employee? Are they like a contractor for a while? And how were they selected?
Is that your only question, Matt? Do you want to keep going, or?
I got a couple others. I'm really glad that Mr. Morales is focused on the continuous improvement of the district. Mr. Morales, when you have a second, could you just share one measurable goal that you have for the district that we can measure? Thanks.
Can we go first? We've established our goals throughout the last couple of meetings. One, of course, is safety, which we gave the presentation, and throughout the course of this year, there will be additional presentations to elucidate and draw upon the goals that we have as a board and as a district. And I know you're here for all the meetings. You'll be, you'll be exposed to everything in the coming months, for sure.
Thank you for elucidating that. Mr. Duffendini, I read something really inspiring today, which was a mission to create, educate students to become problem solvers and creative thinkers, and to prepare them for the challenges in the emerging world. Other than, I think we knocked it out of the park, we're really like 10 out of 10 stars on introducing sexuality into 10-year-olds, but other than that, what are some of your personal ideas for creating problem solvers and creative thinkers in the coming year? And what ideas do you get from the trustees that are outside the box to deliver on the mission of the district?
Sure. Again, I'm just going to basically recapture Mr. Morales's comments. We spent quite a bit of time talking about goals, vision statements. We spent the whole second part of last year working together to understand the community's expectations. A lot of my responsibility, Matt, is not necessarily me sitting up here and passing my own judgments or my own decisions about what should be the priorities of the school district. I believe it's important that we take the time to listen to the community, to listen to the students, to listen to the parents, to listen to our staff members about what their value systems look like as a result of that work.
The Farmingdale Federation of Teachers or the community? The FFT or the community?
So again, I don't know if you were part of last month's presentation, Matt? Were you? Were you here last month?
I was not. Thank you for pointing that out.
No, 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 I'm not trying to embarrass you for it. I'm just indicating that I spent the whole last meeting talking about the nearly 100,000 votes and the 10,000 different community members that were a part of the Portrait of a Graduate work that we did last year. If you weren't a part of the last meeting, you wouldn't have known that. That's all I was trying to highlight or understand. So as a result of all of that feedback that we had received, the 10 tenants came, we decided that we were going to work through commitments, and then we were going to be very forward-facing to make sure that there was no ambiguity, that there was no question as to what the goals were that we were working towards. So we were very public-facing, and each month, as Mr. Morales had stated, we're going to be going through each one of the goals, and each one of the goals that we have is measurable. So connected to the first goal with regard to a safe school, we're collecting data from a survey to understand, you know, what people's perceptions are with regard to safety. Do they feel safe? Do they understand the protocols? We're going to do a bunch of work this year, trying to retrain and get more precision built into our safety plan, as an example, and at the end of the year, we're going to do that survey again. We're going to see how we did and the measure of progress that we've made over the year in order to try to create a safer environment. Each one of the meetings will have data that's connected back to it to create accountability systems. Certain instances, we're going to do a great job, and we're going to make those marks, and in certain instances, we might not, and we might have to go back to the drawing board and try again.
Yep.
But that is the measure of what we will be doing. That is the data that we will be collecting. That's the process that we're going to follow this year, and I can promise you in all the years to come.
So of a $183 million investment that the community has entrusted you with, we don't have goals yet, but we will, and safety was the first one, and then we'll see more measurable goals about how to deliver on the mission of creative thinkers and problem solvers, and we'll, we don't have those today, but we'll start to see them over time.
No, no, not, not correct. Again, you missed the last meeting. I'd be happy to point you in the right direction so that you can at least take a look at the presentation. We outlined those goals already as to what the remainder of the school district's going to, what the remainder of the school year is going to look like. Each month is already carved out. We're working inside. All of our goals are based upon those Board of Education goals. Goals with regard to the respective buildings are going to culminate in the final presentation that we'll deliver to the community at the June meeting. So there's a lot of work that was already done, there was parameters that were laid out, and again, each month, we're going to be providing an opportunity to communicate that to the community as a whole.
Well, one of those goals include academics, where you can actually measure the improvement in the quality of academics in the district?
Next month, I invite you to come to the October meeting. I had mentioned before, we're going to be talking about some different math-related goals that we have, parent university goals that we have, communication with parents with regard to curriculum, teacher center goals for professional development. I encourage you to come to the next meeting where you can hear all about it.
Yes, I actually received through FOIL an export from your professional development system of the teachers, of the courses our teachers are taking, including interrupting white supremacy, the Long Island Center for Equity, which is code for Marxism, and all the interesting courses that Farmingdale teachers are taking with our taxes today. So thank you for the professional development opportunities, and thank you, thank you for...
Yes, yeah, you're just shooting from the hip. I have no way to vet anything that you just said, but if you're willing to take a phone But if you're willing to take a phone call, please feel free to give me a call. I'd be happy to have a conversation to try to put some context on whatever it is that you just spurred it out.
Yeah, absolutely. They're in your own district professional development system of the courses the teachers register for and take in the 2020 to 21 school year. But thank you for outlining the goals that'll be coming soon. Mr. Motizi, and so the interim treasurer, is this under contract? They're not a full-time employee?
Yeah, Matt, sorry. I apologize. I thought maybe you had more questions for me. That's why I asked that. Yes, while we're going through the process of replacing Brian, we did have to get an interim in place, like many school districts do, in order to continue conducting business.
Okay. So, this is not a full-time employee. Do you know the length of the contract, or?
It's on an as-needed basis. It's on an hourly basis.
Okay, understood. Thank you for that. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Morales, we're almost at the 30-minute mark for public participation, so maybe one more speaker if there's someone there.
Last call, anyone?
Parsa Kareemee again. So, when I met with the principal over at Howard, I asked him about the, any teachers or any administrators push any kind of political or gender or any kind of ideological beliefs on the students? He said, absolutely not. That doesn't happen here. Not at all. And then my next question was, okay, so you made announcements for kids to go down and pick up ribbons. And then they go down to the social worker's office, who, I won't mention her name, but she was famous a few years ago for anti-police rhetoric. Go down to her office to pick up a ribbon, and the kid's going to ask, what's this ribbon for? Why am I wearing this pin? Do they have a stare off for a few seconds? And then did they say tolerance? And then the kid's going to say, tolerance for what? That's all I can say. So, we don't know as parents what the conversation is in that office because we're not there. And as Eric alluded to, five days in a row, they were solicited to go down without us knowing they were going to go down. And now we don't know because we didn't give the consent for them to even be allowed to go down. Now, they're going down. They're having a conversation that we're not part of. And we're supposed to believe that all they're going to say is, tolerance, wear it. And it's been such a great job of being thrown at them at all angles as they walk down the hall. They have an idea what it's for. And then we scratch our head when we say the kids are getting bullied. You're taking something that's a highly intimate subject that none of you would want to have a discussion about. That if I had a discussion about something that's sexual at work, I would be slapped with a sexual harassment suit, and I would get fired. But we're going to take our kids, my kids, not yours. My children are going to go in the office and have a conversation about something. And then they're going to get convinced, oh, wear this pin. And basically walking down the hallway and saying, I have this sexual orientation at 10 years old. Does it give you pause? And can you step back for a second and say when the bullying is happening? Maybe it's because you're branding these kids and saying, wear this ribbon. Do you not think that other kids, and kids are cruel, are going to make fun of that kid? Why would you do that? Why would you brand a kid and say, wear this ribbon that says you're this sexual orientation at an inappropriate age group, might I add, and then get confused when they get bullied? And one final thing I asked him about, when he said, oh, these kids coming in here telling me they get bullied, I said, I hope you're punishing these children that are bullying these other children. And the answer was, well, they don't tell us their names. So, now, I'd like to know, is there a number that you have? You don't have to obviously tell me their names. Do you have a number of kids that are being punished for bullying? Or is it kids just showing up and saying, I'm getting bullied. I'm getting name called.
30 seconds.
But we're not getting the names of the bullies. Because if I can ask that maybe the staff could do a little harder job of pulling out the names of these kids that are bullying these other kids and punish them, so it stops. Instead of, oh, you won't tell me their name? Okay, let's go back. And our answer is, let's give you more ribbons to wear and then be surprised when you're getting bullied. Maybe we could leave something intimate to the parents and to the child and keep it age-appropriate. Thank you.
I just think we need to be very careful when we conflate sexual acts with trying to be open and tolerant of other people. I think they're two completely separate things. Now, that being said, Parsa, I understand where you're coming from. And yeah, if people are saying, you should do this, you should do that, that's a different conversation, I think, what we're having here. If you have specific examples, obviously, you can share them with us of students that are actually saying those things. But I think, again, not only is it a very fine line, but we have to be careful about conflating two very different things. Being open and being courteous and being respectful of a child is very different than talking about sexual acts. They're not mutually inclusive. So, again, it's a learning experience for all of us. I'm not saying you're right or wrong. I'm just saying we collectively have to be, we have to be very careful about how we perceive what's going on and how we potentially can conflate two very, very different things. But I do appreciate your input, and I appreciate everyone's, we all appreciate your input for coming up and having the courage to speak at the mic this evening. Is that our 30 minutes, Mary? Okay. Thank you all for coming up to speak. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to enter into executive session.
Upon advice of counsel, I make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing a specific personnel item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming up.